Everyone, to the May 14th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see everybody out there tonight. The Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 5:30 where we had discussed personnel and possible litigation. The Board of Supervisors also held a workshop at 6:30 where we had spoke about the walking trail at the Dolphin Park. We spoke about a sign system for the Feasterville Fire Department vehicles. Mr. Coppin spoke about selling township vehicles on municipal bid. Mr. Coppins also spoke about siding on the Dolphin Activity Center. Mr. Mulholland spoke about a logo that will probably be on the agenda tonight and will probably be approved in regards to the Dolphin Basketball Court. We also spoke about, Mr. Mulholland also spoke about the VAC asking for approval for use at Russell Elliott Park for the Travis Mannion Run and also spoke about the VAC using the Play Wiki Farm for a Veterans Awareness Walk. I know we have a representative out there tonight. We look forward to seeing you in a little bit. And Mr. Mulholland, or excuse me, Mr. Everett spoke about residents having failing private septic systems. He also spoke about a manhole relining project and spoke about Brownsville Road Crosswalk. And the chief gave us an update on a traffic complaint study on our township streets. Now, at this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. If anybody would like to come up for public comment, please state your name, your address, put it in our logbook, please, and there's always a three-minute time limit.
Hello, everybody. Hi, my name is Glenn Stevens. I live at 345 East Motta Avenue. I don't know if any of you guys are Phillies fans, but Agonola is killing us. He's just freaking horrible. Anyway, I always said I'm from 345 East Motta Avenue and it was at that location where Mr. Italia gave my property to his friend so he could destroy it. I'd really like to know why. I assume it's his friend. I don't know why, but Mike Italia has chosen to plead the fifth. I understand this. These are just questions about his job, about his decisions, about, there's no curveballs. I'm not going to throw him curveballs. I'm just going to ask him why he made the decisions and took the actions or neglected to take the actions that he did. Now, Mr. Paritano, a couple of weeks ago, you were saying that I've been coming here for 16 months and I still haven't persuaded you to change your mind on anything. Well, yes, there were some things I thought that were, that could have been a call by you guys, but there were also things that are just facts. I just wanted you to look for the truth. I told you where to find the truth. It was right in this building and nobody is willing to look at the truth. Mr. Kay and Mr. Dillon have both called me a liar without looking for the truth. Now, I don't know about the chairman for listeners, that's unethical. It really is. It's totally unethical for him to call me a liar while not looking for the truth. I think that's just absolutely horrible. Also, the last time I said this, you looked at me like I had three heads, so I made sure I brought the quote. Mr. Dillon has said and confirmed that Mike Italia does not have the authority to allow your neighbor to destroy your property. Let me say that again. Mike Italia does not have the authority to allow your neighbor to destroy your property. Very, very simple, very plain English, not lawyer talk at all. Anybody can figure it out. In my opinion, at that moment, when I have proof here in my pocket that that's exactly what Mike Italia did, Mr. Dillon should have recused himself from this. He was not acting on the township's behalf. He was acting on his own behalf. I believe it was Mr. Dillon who told Mr. Italia to plead the fifth. Why else would he plead the fifth? Is he not proud of his job? Is he not proud of the actions he has taken? I really don't understand this at all. It's, I think it would be an embarrassment for you guys. Like even, like I said, I'm looking for you to seek the truth and see the truth and want the truth. That's why I brought up Charlie, right? Your fictional employee who stole money from a car because if Mike Italia worked for you, you wouldn't find that acceptable.
Mr. Stevens, sir, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment?
I have an issue with the House. I bring it up now or is that another point in time?
Is it? Public comment is for non-agenda items.
Stormwater issue or rainwater?
If it's not on tonight's agenda, sure, now is the time, yes. How are you?
All right. Go ahead. Mike Palaco, 133 South Midway. Been a resident for 19 years. I'm not in habit of complaining, but this is an old issue. It's about at least seven years old. When they repaved the street, they trapped the water in. They put a crown in the street. The street was always designed flat and the water ran toward the turnpike and that's where it picks up stormwater. One of the neighbors, when they were paving, told him he didn't want the water to come across and go across his property. He asked the person paving to put a crown in the street. Now the water's been trapped there and it's just getting worse and worse and worse. I mean, it's, it literally, the puddle's the size of this room. I can't even put cans out without waterproof boots on. So we either got to grind that street back down, let the water go down, or...
And this is on Midway, you had said? On which road again?
It's South Midway Avenue.
South Midway.
And your property?
Yes, that is my property. It's actually holding the water in right at my property. I used to just drain south and head down. Didn't head down perfect. It did get on some of the lawns across the street, but it's designed to pick up where there's a little trench that they actually widened it with riprap and it goes through to the turnpike. And the water's just not going down that way anymore. It's just laying right in front of my driveway. The rain was so bad today that it actually built up high enough that it actually went over the crest of the street and then finally there's another speedy drain that they put in that goes out to Pennsylvania Avenue.
Well, so there's specific laws about that and people aren't allowed to change the contours and who would look at this?
Was it township contractor that did it? When they paved the street?
Couldn't, well, could Mr. Coppin?
And he put the asphalt in and he put it in wrong. He didn't put it, he didn't match what was there.
Remember the year it was done?
It was, it goes back a while. It was when, I was working in Atlantic City when they did it and I've been retired for six years, so. But I did bring it up to the township at that time. They came out, they looked at it, shrugged their shoulders, said, you know, there's nothing they could do about it. I just thought at some point that, you know, I would relocate my driveway and try to spread it out some more, but, you know.
I live in the next drive, next development over from the gentleman. I think I was closer to maybe like 12 years ago that they paved that, they paved that area.
No, it wasn't 12 years ago.
No, you're sure?
I've only been retired six years and they did it while I was working in Atlantic City because I was staying there at the time.
Yeah, because I know on...
About seven years.
On Westview, they had some problems that we, that they curved and that was going back a little bit farther, farther than where you are.
Mr. Coppins, Mr. Coppins, would you mind getting the gentleman's number? Maybe you can go out there and take a look at it so we have some sort of idea what's, what he's saying?
Yeah, I took some pictures today and I have them, you know, 30 years. It just, you know, the water used to run down the street and it just don't anymore. They changed. They changed the slope and they actually changed the crown of the street and now it doesn't go down and they actually followed...
So give Mr. Coppin's information and he'll be in touch.
Yes, okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Palaco. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Could you sign in?
I signed in up front. Is there something here I need to sign in?
Your main address on there, but...
All right. Anybody else tonight for a public comment? All right, Mr. Boyd, you're always good to see you, sir.
That's what we're doing.
Good.
Let me sign in real quick so Cindy, Mrs. Bowman doesn't have me. So I just came to you guys tonight. I know it's on the agenda. For those who don't know, I'm the chairman of the Veterans Advisory Committee in Lower South. Every year for the past 14 years, we've used Russell Elliott and Buckridge Farms to host our Travis Mannion Run, which raises funds for the Veterans Advisory Committee Council. And in return, we donate that money to different scholarships, different foundations to help vets in needs and up-and-coming veterans and veteran families. So tonight, I'd just like to urge you to possibly approve for Saturday, 9/13 Russell Elliott's race. And we are excited to announce our first annual We'll Watch Suicide Prevention Walk at Play Wiki Farm on October 18th. If you guys find it okay to approve that also, it'd be much appreciated. There are a few other things coming up over the next couple of months we're going to be excited to announce. Check out the website. We'll be doing a flag raising at the Senior Center. We'll be introducing a Hall of Heroes at the Sarah Mitchell's Building and a few other surprises for this year. So I just urge and kindly ask you guys to approve our race and our walk this year. Thank you.
Thank you much, Mr. Boyd. We appreciate everything you and the entire VAC does for our community also. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? All right, seeing none. Now I would like to move on to our consent agenda. Line 1A, approval of minutes, April 23, 2025. B, approval of accounts payable, May 14, 2025. And C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, May 14, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt a consent agenda for May 14, 2025.
All right, thank you, Mr. Castle. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Paritano. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item two has been taken off the agenda tonight, so we'll move on to line item three. Consider adoption of ordinance number 615, appointing a solicitor for collection of the delinquent real estate taxes. Mr. Ryan, sir?
Yes, this ordinance authorizes the appointment of Portnoy Law Associates as solicitor for collecting delinquent real estate tax accounts and certain unpaid sewer and trash fee accounts.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. So the motion would read to adopt ordinance 615 approving, approving appointment of solicitor, interest assessment and attorney fees and collection fees added to the amount of collected as part of the unpaid real estate taxes and municipal claims for certain delinquent accounts. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Paritano. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item four, consider adoption of resolution 2025-20 directing the Bucks County Tax Bureau not to collect delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of Lower Southampton Township. Mr. Ryan, sir?
This, this resolution authorizes the Bucks County Tax Crane Bureau not to collect delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of Lower Southampton Township and this will allow Portnoy to collect on the real estate taxes instead.
All right, thank you much, Mr. Ryan. So the motion would read to adopt resolution 2025-20 directing Bucks County Tax Bureau not to collect delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of Lower Southampton Township. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
So second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item five, consider award for the 2025 sanitary sewer relining project. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. This is for authorization to award 2025 sanitary sewer manhole rehab project. It's 27 manholes for approximately 221 vertical feet. We received bids on May 7th. We received two bids and the low bid was for a price of $84,743 from SwrP Incorporated out of Bristol, PA.
All right, thank you, Mr. Everett. So the motion would read to award the 2025 sanitary sewer relining project to SwrP Inc., the lowest bidder, at the bid price of $87,743 and to authorize the township manager to sign the documents. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item six, consider adoption of resolution 2025-21, disposition of old files. Mr. Gatto, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. This pertains with the disposition of records that is set forth in the Municipal Records Manual and pertaining to Act 428, basically requiring a government, a governing body to approve it before they're disposed of. So with regard to this particular resolution, you have the Finance Department, you have the 2014 payroll, 2014 accounts payable, 2014 bank statements, canceled checks, 2016 cash receipts, 2016 accounts payable. You have 2016, 2017 library invoices and 2017 accounts payable. From the Farm Marshal's Office, you have the age of 2009 through 2011 fire investigation reports. The vast majority of these records are to be retained for seven years. The wind being the cash receipts, that's at three years. As far as the Farm Marshal Office, that's to be retained for 10 years. They already have met that limit and so we're looking for approval of the resolution 2521 for tonight. Board Chair?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gatto. So the motion would read to adopt resolution 2025-21, disposition of old files. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Paritano. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it fire inspection reports or fire investigation reports? I believe the investigation reports are supposed to be permanent.
It has listed on my report, it's fire investigation reports and it says retained for 10 years. So if not, I will double check for you on that one. That's what was listed on it. Yeah. I can double check for that. I'll look at that.
Mr. Dillon, with Mr. Ottinger's question, his concern, is this something that we should even proceed then with or? Well, if you're not...
I'm sorry, the thing that is listed as supporting document, fire safety inspection records and according to this, it says for 10 years.
So inspection is fine, but if it's investigation, I think it has to be permanent.
What is listed here is inspection, but what's denoted on the resolution is investigation. So we'll double check on that one. So we'll, we'll leave a caveat, just...
We need to amend it to say...
Pull that one out.
Change the word investigation to inspection.
But we want to make sure they're not, it's inspection versus investigation. So we want to hold on that one. I wouldn't change any words, just pull it out altogether.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank.
All right, so the motion still stands the way it is or should we create a new motion now?
I think we should. I'd like to make a motion to table the item.
Okay, all right. So...
Second.
I'll second that.
Sorry about that.
Do we, do we even really need to vote on that then?
You could just pull that one back.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Can't move down.
All right, very good. We'll move on to line item number seven. Consider authorizing solicitor to sign stipulation to settle document for FTP Feasterville Plaza LPV Bucks County Board of Assessments. Mr. Dillon, sir?
So this is an assessment appeal that's been handled by the school board solicitor who's handled them for years. They have the greatest investment in it. They get the largest share of the taxes, so they've been handling it on behalf of the township for years. They've reached a settlement with the taxpayer. It's been already approved by the county and everyone who's part of, receiving part of the tax funds has to agree to the settlement. My recommendation is adopt the motion to approve the settlement and authorize me to sign the document.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dillon. So the motion would read to authorize Mr. Dillon to sign the stipulation to settle document for FTP Feasterville Plaza LPV Bucks County Board of Assessment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Do we have a second?
I just want to clarify. This was denied?
No, it was settled. There was an appeal. There was an appeal and now it's been resolved. If you read the entire stipulation, there's an agreement for the amount and the number of years and then it can be appealed again.
Okay.
Okay, so we have...
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second by Mrs. Bowman.
Just wanted to clarify.
Discussion from the board? Do we have any information that we could share with the public whether or not we are giving back money or could you be a little more explicit?
It's in the stipulation. I mean...
Well, I said for the public, not so they can know that, you know, this is something that I know...
The old assessment was 1,343,160. The new assessment is 1,239,500. There's a difference of 103,000. The mill, then, so, for example, this is talking about Bucks County and the mill rate was 2745. The overpayment was $2,845.47. The discount, the total overpayment was $2,700. Now, Lower Southampton total overpayment's 1,430.34.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. All right, any other discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number eight, consider permission to advertise and sell township vehicles on municipal bid. Mr. Coppin, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. I'm requesting approval to advertise and sell non-t township vehicles on the municipal bid.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coppins. The motion would read to advertise and sell township vehicles on municipal bid. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number nine, consider authorizing advertisement of bid for the Brownsville Road Crosswalk. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Looking for authorization to advertise when the contract documents are ready for the Brownsville Road pedestrian improvements. This contract includes, but is not limited to, the construction of 200 feet of concrete curb, 675 square feet of concrete sidewalk, six AB8 ramps, parapet stone mounted, rectangular flashing, beacon, striping and signage.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Everett. So the motion would read to authorize the advertisement of the bid notice for the Brownsville Road Pedestrian Improvement Crosswalk. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Paritano, would you like to make a second?
Second.
All right.
Sorry, forgot.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number 10, consider authorizing change order for the Dolphin Basketball Court logo. Mr. Mulholland?
Thank you, Board Chair. This is a, excuse me, change order for the Dolphin Construction Project, letting them put a logo on the larger basketball court. Let's include a new designed logo.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mulholland. So the motion would read to authorize the change order of $3,250 for the installation of the center court logo at the Dolphin Basketball Court. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number 11, consider approval of lease agreement for the upstairs apartment at the Play Wiki Farm. Mr. Dillon, sir?
Yes, I've prepared a lease and the part that is handwritten notes that were supplied by Mr. Gatto to myself. I didn't get this information until Tuesday, so I've prepared a lease and sent it to all of you by separate email. It's for the upstairs apartment, Play Wiki. The rent's $550 a month. Deposit, it's a month-to-month lease. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it yet, so...
All right, so the motion would read to approve the lease agreement for the upstairs apartment at the Play Wiki Farm and to authorize the township manager to sign the lease agreement. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item 12, consider approval of the Veterans Advisory Council's use at Russell Elliott Memorial Park for the Travis Mannion 9/11 Heroes Run. Mr. Mulholland, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. This is the annual Travis Mannion Memorial Run. We shut down Russell Elliott Park in the morning for all events so that the VAC can have their, their run.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mulholland. So the motion would read to authorize the Veterans Advisory Council's use of the Russell Elliott Memorial Park and the surrounding neighborhood on September 13, 2025 between 6:00 AM and 12:00 PM for the Travis Mannion 9/11 Heroes Run. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion?
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. This event probably takes 50 to 100 volunteers to assist and it's just wonderful that our community could come together and help our veterans who, you know, have laid their life on the line for all of us. Also, our fire companies usually set something up there, so thanks to our volunteers that assist with this as well.
Very good. Very well stated, Mr. Castle. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item 13, consider approval for the Veterans Advisory Council's use of the Play Wiki Farm for the Veterans Awareness Walk. Mr. Mulholland, again?
Thank you, Board Chair. This would be a new event at Play Wiki Farm through the VAC on October 18th, starting at 9:00 AM to raise awareness for the veterans.
Starting at 9:00 AM? I thought I have in my notes 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM to 12:00.
Registration starts at 8:00 AM, 9:00.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mulholland. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mulholland. So the motion would read to approve the Veterans Advisory Council use for Play Wiki Farm for the Veterans Awareness Walk on October 18th, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item 14. Consider approval of siding for the Dolphin Activity Center. Mr. Coppins, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. We're looking for approval for the siding for the Dolphin Activity Center. We got two quotes and the lowest quote coming in by Kepo for $17,484. Also, I want to just mention that it would include a final contract, a one-third deposit is required upon contract signing.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Coppins. We appreciate that. So the motion would read to approve Kepo siding and windows bid for the siding at the Dolphin Activity Center for the amount of $17,484. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item 15. Consider authorizing payment number two for the Dolphin Sport Court Reconstruction. Mr. Everett, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. I'm requesting authorization for payment number two to Mike Silcox and Sons. Amount to be paid is $105,997.72.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reverts. So the motion would read to authorize payment number two to Mike Silcox and Sons paving for the amount of $105,997.72 and authorize the township manager to sign the documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Perrotto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the managers' report. Mr. Gatto, sir.
Just wondering, Board Chair, again sanitation rebates are running out. May 31st is the deadline. Actually, 1,150,000 rebates have been issued. So it's about $57,950 has been rebated back. Thank you, Board Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gatto. Moving on to supervisors' comments. Ladies first, Mrs. Bowman.
I just want to remind everybody, we're getting warmer weather. The kids are out on their bikes playing, so please slow down. And I just want to thank all the residents for their patience while we're undergoing these PennDOT projects. It'll be done before you know it, so hang in there and please use your patience. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Perrotto, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everybody again for coming out and participating in your local government. It's always a great thing to see people that show up and care. Not that the people at home don't care either, I don't want to misquote it there. It's just nice when people can take the extra effort to come out and see us in person. It's nice to see you too. As far as the rest of our month goes, I just want to remind everybody that don't forget to vote. May 20th is our primary. Just don't think just because, you know, there's not a big name on the ballot, you know, that your vote's not worth something. Please come out. If you already haven't voted by mail, please come out and place your vote for your candidate of your choice in this year's primary. Other than that, hopefully the sun's going to come back out again and we're going to have a nice weekend, I hope. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Let's hope so, Mr. Perrotto. Mr. Ottinger, sir.
Dr. Donick.
All right, and to my left, our superstar vice chairman, Mr. Castle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always an honor to precede you. I want to thank the residents for coming out and those who are watching at home. As Mr. Perrotto said, it's your government, we just serve you. And whether you have something positive or negative to say, we always listen and we take appropriate action when it's necessary. Please sign up for township emails, lowersouthamptontownship.org. You get an email once a week. It lists tonight's agenda. It'll list some emergencies. It lists our summer programs that Mr. Mulholland, our Parks and Rec Director, is in charge of. We probably have over 20 programs for this summer for the children and as well as adults. So please sign up if you're not already on the email list. Our zoning department is out enforcing our ordinances. Please cut your grass, remove your junk cars from your driveways. We just got a list this week and they're really doing their job. So I want to thank our zoning department for trying to make our community a nicer place to live. And our next meeting, Mr. Chairman, is the end of this month, I believe it is.
May 28th.
May 28th.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Castle. All right, well, first off, I'd like to wish a, I hope all of our mothers had a terrific Mother's Day on May 4th, 5th, and 6th. Myself, Mrs. Bowman, Mr. Castle, Mr. Ottinger, Chief Crimley, we all had the pleasure of attending the annual PSATS convention in Hershey, PA, which was very, very educational. And as the voting delegate that represents the township, it was my pleasure to do so. Let's not forget, once again, May 20th is Election Day, Memorial Day, the 26th of this month. Let's not forget the real meaning of that. It's terrific that we can all sit around and have barbecues with our family, enjoy ourselves, but the ultimate sacrifice was made by our veterans, so we should always keep that in the forefront. As Mr. Castle had said, May 28th is our next meeting. And at this point, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Still moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone.
I'm impressed.